Hello conscious breathers, infinite beings alike, Breath Family, hello. Today is Pi Day, 314. And we're gonna do a little session today. Been watching your YouTube videos, thank you. So much value, much love, Esam. That's what I tend to focus on, value, 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 value. The more you focus on that, the more it's gonna just ripple into all dimensions of your life for the better, I promise. I promise. Value, quality over quantity, seriously, seriously. Quality over quantity, seriously. So what you guys are hearing is a perfect set of numeral sequence when it comes to the piano, all in the sequence of Pi, which is within the golden ratio found in all aspects of life. If you cut off a bark of a tree, you see it. If you see how a fetus is formed. If you see the waves of an ocean, how it's formed. The spiral of the ocean, it's there, it's all there. Do you have a Breathwork Tantra course? Ooh, talk about synchronicity. I'm actually in the middle of working on that. As couples as well, so it's gonna be for couples and for singles as well. Oh, trust me, it's, it's much needed out there. It's, um, it's gonna be one of a kind. And I can't wait for it to share it out with the world. Hmm, quite a few more people in here, um, so if you are just joining, we are going to get into a little Breathwork Session, breathing in quote-unquote Pi. And again, if you're not familiar with Pi and the mathematical sequence that was founded by mathematicians in India and brought by the mathematician himself, Fibonacci, into the Western world. Now you know, it's literally within all life, all aspects of the structure of life, even the structure of an atom, how the structure of an atom is formed in a clockwise manner. That is Pi. And it is the natural order of things when it comes to natural law. And that is what Pi represents, that is what Pi signifies. Any questions before, uh, we get into this session? Yeah, 314. The beautiful thing about Pi is no, no one number, uh, repeats itself. So it's a beautiful sequence and, uh, living. I challenge you to, um, read the numbers of Pi, 30 days straight. And, um, it's a, it's a mathematical magic number of sequence of this alphabetic, natural resonance impacting your physical reality and it's, it's really a beautiful thing. Uh, when it comes to fractal therapy, or fractals, or natural fractals as in, uh, trees, or the waves of the ocean, the ripples in the ocean. That is, that's literally part of the whole sequence of it all. It's, uh, it's how nature is just playing with itself in a mathematical form, in a format. And when you read those numbers, the same thing as drawing the flower of life, when you drawing the flower of life is a meditation of its own. It gets you into a certain trance. If you can do it continuously for god knows when, the more you do it, the, I've met one person who can literally draw the perfect circles I've ever seen. Uh, when I used to live up in Jersey and we met at a gathering. And this guy, when he draws, he just gets into like a zone, like dude, when you, when you draw it, you get into a state of awareness because you're literally looking at the mathematical structure of nature. And when you're drawing it yourself and you're going in the motion of things. And that's why mandalas themselves are so powerful in, um, healing and just sacred geometry overall. Because you're also training your eyes to see within all things. See things for what they are, not for what they quote-unquote could be, or an illusionary thing you're trying to just add on, add and add and add on to it and make it more complicated than it needs to be. What you're listening, love it. Yeah, so what I'm playing in the background right now and I'm actually, after this, I'm gonna be working on um, some subliminal Breathwork music, this will be one of them. The other one will maybe controversial to some people within the quote-unquote spiritual community. But I believe in compassion towards all life and stop, we gotta stop demonize. I don't care how high echelon you may see things in such of that nature. When you have compassion for others, that's when we can really start to make some major shifts. And that's what I see some people are lacking within, um, even they may come up with good intentions, don't get me wrong, but still. What's the point of demonizing something? If, if something is really that great, there's no need to demonize it. Uh, demonize the other spectrum of it, right? Because it, it's, it's, the energy should speak for itself. And that's why when I work with some clients who wanna get healthier and they don't wanna force themselves, I don't force any dietary change that dramatic on them. Like something small is like, we'll start off with the soda, like cut out the soda, replace coconut water, that's simple. I'm not gonna tell them straight up, hey, stop eating meat, blah, blah, blah. And, um, literally let the breath do the talking, salut. Literally let, literally let the breath do the talking to the point where they can feel like, oh no, this is actually dehydrating from my body. I'm like, ah, well, yeah, what you're feeling is literally what you're feeling, you're not you're not sugar coating it at a certain point because you're going deep within your emotions and taking it head on and breathing through those emotions and stop sugar coating it and numbing it with sugary foods or you name it, just get in the, the sense of gluttony. I see these patterns in cactus plants spiraling. Is that what you mean by Pi Day? Well, today is March the, what's, March the 14th, right? Today's March the 14th and, uh, 3 slash 14, Pi Day. Literally Pi Day. Someone goes, this song is so sweet, can you make it a subliminal? Yes, um, if you, if you're just joining, this is one of the songs, um, that I will be making into a subliminal, literally right after this and and, uh, when everything dies down in terms of energy, I'll be making it around 3:00, actually, around 3:00 AM Eastern Time. I'll be making some subliminals. One of them will be relating to Pi, the other will be relating to a touchy subject that many people are going through and that subliminal is for those who are in a different paradigm of reality, but maybe wanna take a sneak peek of another sense of healing and and that is what I mean by compassion. Instead of demonizing another side that you may not, your perception may not see, um, healing. The compassion, having compassion is a powerful thing in terms of just the overall growth of everyone because at the end of the day, why put someone down? Like, why? If we're all trying to head to the same destination, why put them down? Thank you, thank you, uh, Dark Monk. Are you aware of sepi medicine? No, not aware. The aged urine has helped me so much with my skin and foot hip pain. Ah, thank you for sharing that. Drinking Mountain Dew as we speak, but I only drink soda once a month. See, that's a start. Um, you know, so not everyone can just go, um, hard quote-unquote cold turkey, right? And that's what, uh, you know, you, you guys really have to be weary of certain coaches out there that will demonize things, quote-unquote. That's your sign to run away. That's your sign to run away. Maybe it may come off in terms of the intention of like, come on, blah, blah, blah. But at the end of the day, again, you're still putting someone down, no matter, no matter how you may look at it in terms of, oh, growing, growing humanity to a certain point. You're still putting that person down. And when you have more compassion and you ease them into a different state of awareness, that's bliss, that's bliss. And sure, you may see that, that, um, tough love, quote-unquote, right? Well, the toughest love really is self-love to yourself and not conforming to society's pressure. That's tough love. Because you're literally going against the mass majority of the brainwashing, quote-unquote, going on. And giving your own self-love and easing your way to a different paradigm of reality, quote-unquote, to the real 1%. You see the reverse psychology that, you know, this is why I strayed away from conspiracies. You see the reverse psychology there that I did there? Cause that's the real 1% that not many people talk about. What else do you add in your coconut water? Nothing, I really like drinking coconut water straight. It's, it's good. Um, there's a, there's a saying in the Tao, like numb the taste. Close your mouth, right? But numb the taste, when you start to numb the taste, you start to realize emotional, emotional habits. And that's emotional intelligence right there, but we have a great amount of people and you guys made it this far. And more people are popping in here. If you guys are just joining, we're about to get into a mini Breathwork Session. And then you guys are more than welcome to hop on Instagram. Probably someone from Instagram finally watched my live and finally gave me access to adding three plus people on now, so. I'm still shadow banned. I've been shadow banned since 2012, so that's nothing new. My grandma used to wash her eyes and boogers with her own pee when I was little and stayed with her. A lot of weird things she used to do now, now I'm learning, she knew, back home in Ethiopia, yeah. What's your favorite juice? Uh, right now it's orange and mint, so I put the mint in the juicer as well. And I, I just love, I love the taste, orange and mint, it's my favorite juice right now. Please save. Maybe, maybe. You know, yeah, I'll save it, I'll save it. I'll save this one. No worries, guys, I'll save this one. I was really planning not to and just keep this in the, in the, uh, in the members group, but I'll definitely save this one for you guys. Alright, so let's get into some Breathwork. Some Alchemy Breathwork, which is a nasal breathing system, not just a technique to be utilized in everyday life. Not just a sit-down session. And you know, different techniques, different techniques, you can't just randomly just do it out of the whim, right? So this is why I stuck more with the nasal. And even my sifu, when he understood, when I told him that ideology, when I spoke to him like a couple months um, into it, when he heard about what I was doing, he was like, that's, that's gonna shift a lot of, a lot of individuals into a new, a new way of looking at things. Rather than looking at things one-sided. And that's why, um, many people may gravitate more towards, uh, Breathwork than this traditional meditation itself, but mind you, Breathwork itself is meditation, it's a conscious meditation. When you go to sleep, you're unconsciously meditating. You're, uh, I call it unconscious Breathwork, too. And we see the science and we see, um, the many unfortunate studies where if you're breathing more with your mouth to sleep, it's causing so many imbalances in terms of sleep apnea and raises your risk for heart attack, like, come on. Mind you, um, mind you, when it comes to mouth breathing, or anything with mouth Breathwork, there, there is, um, certain benefits for sure, but in the long term, when you're forcing the body to secrete certain chemicals in a forceful manner, in a sense, it's gonna have long-term effects and this is more in the sympathetic side of Breathwork. And this is why I tend to really focus on the parasympathetic. So that's just me, that's where I stand. I'm not saying one thing is better than the other, but personally, and on this journey, including in terms of fasting too, parasympathetic is where you really want to reside the most of. Like I said, stress is the number one thing against you. And we have more people joining in. Alright, cool. Tape your mouth closed to sleep. While breathing, yeah, so another thing you can do is smile to sleep as well, that's another alternative. I put out a video already, but um, that's a great alternative to mouth taping. Big alternative because you're training yourself instead of, again, the external thing, it always comes back to the external, external, looking for anything external. Smile to sleep. I don't care how bad your day is, smile to sleep. That is a great alternative to mouth taping because you're training, um, muscle memory as well into your subconscious. And why not the last act you do, going to sleep, and who knows, it could be your last sleep, I'm just, just putting it out there. But, um, overall reprogramming of your subconscious. I wanna, wanna go to sleep happy, why not? Why not? I don't care how bad your day is. Smile to sleep. And there's some, uh, deep touching stories I can tell you about, um, clients who have people in the prison. And you know, they tell them some of these things to, to do and, uh, some good feedback just from that, so. I don't care how bad your day is, smile to sleep, guys. That's my gift to you right there too. So let's get into breathing in Pi. Um, I'm happy that the music is at the right level, no one is saying it's too loud. Give me some feedback there if you can, uh, but let's go over the main locks in Alchemy. So you wanna start with your eyes, you wanna gaze up towards your eyes, gazing upwards. Towards your third eye, creating that pressure point, your eyelids can be halfway closed or completely closed, that's up to you. The next lock is your tongue. You wanna curl the tongue to the roof of your mouth on the soft palate. And you wanna hold all these locks that we do the whole time. Now, mind you, I know, um, you know, I said that Alchemy, some of these techniques you can use throughout the day, even just randomly, right? Um, you don't always have to have, like, this is practical. When you're, when you're by yourself sitting down, definitely do the eyes, but if you're in front of people or whatever, keep your eyes open, like, you know, like nothing's happening, quote-unquote, and still get into the Breathwork techniques with all the locks that we do. So next lock is the tongue, curl it to the roof of the mouth. And the next lock after that is your pelvic floor. Or everything you go to the bathroom with, you wanna squeeze only on the exhales. And let go on the inhales. And the, yes, rem is good. Your voice is perfect. Ah, thank you for that. Shoot, depending on how this sounds, I might, I might make this into the subliminal, but we'll see. I'll, uh, have to replay it and go over some, some engineering over there on the, on the audio side. So a sequence of breath we're gonna be doing is the Pi sequence. And I'll be guiding it and, um, there will be a point where I say regulate the breath and when I say regulate the breath, there's hundreds of different ways of regulating the breath, but the foundational, easiest thing to do in Alchemy is, um, breathe silently where you can't hear the breath at all, but let's get into the sequence. So the sequence, we'll be doing threes. Couple threes, couple breaths of threes. Three in, three out. And do a couple breaths like that, and then I'm gonna say switch. And when I say switch, it's gonna be regular inhales. And then we're gonna end it off with the fours. So four in, four out. Four in, four out. And, and then after that, I'm gonna say regulate the breath. And when I say regulate the breath, you're gonna breathe silently as much as possible where you can't hear the breath at all. And only breathe with your nose. And when we get into the regulation, take that regular inhale and let the exhale come out naturally, relax. And as you get deeper in the exhale, really slow down your exhale as much as possible towards the end. And I'm gonna ask you to not swallow until we get into the regulation of the breath. And you're gonna taste some, a different type of taste, either metallic taste, sweet taste, depends on what you ate for the day or your overall diet. It depends on so many stress factors too, because it's not just the physical, there's also the emotional side as well. You ever, um, feel so stressed or, um, so overly hyped, you actually taste a different taste in your mouth, right? Or if you're really like, really, really overstressed, you know, that weird, you get a different type of taste in your mouth, that is what's happening. That type of energy is seeping into your water structure and changing it, because water has memory. And our emotions and our own energy is shifting, shifting that. Alright, for those that are just joining in, yeah, so we're only inhaling and exhaling only with the nose. Alchemy Breathwork, we only utilize the nose and the nose alone. And that's it. So we'll go over the main locks for people who are just joining, one more time, one last time, and then we'll just go right into it. So the main lock first of all is your eyes, you're gonna be gazing up at your third eye, going upwards. You're gonna have your eyelids halfway closed or completely closed, up to you. The next lock is your tongue, this is your tongue, you're gonna curl it to the roof of the mouth, really stretch the tongue. The next lock after that is your pelvic floor, or literally everything you go to the bathroom with. You wanna squeeze only on the exhales and let go on the inhales. And the sequence of breath we're gonna start off with is three, so in three, out three. Do a couple breaths like that, and then I'm gonna say switch. And then when I say switch, it's a regular inhale. Regular exhale. Regular inhale. Regular exhale. And then I'm gonna say switch again, we get to fours and inhale four. Exhale four. Inhale four. Exhale four. Just like that. And then I'm gonna say regulate the breath. And then you're gonna let that inhale come in naturally, you're gonna breathe silently as much as possible. And really extend your exhales slowly. And everything is gonna be quiet, you're still gonna have all the locks in, you're still gonna be squeezing on every exhale that you do as well. And let's enjoy the ride, guys, so get in position, you can be on the edge of a chair, you can be in Lotus, you can be in your car, you can be laying flat. Keyword, flat, so make sure your spine is straight, make that, make sure that chest is popping out, so that diaphragm is contracted even more on the exhales, because when you pull on your pelvic floor, little do people know that's actually part of your diaphragm. And that's where the contraction really happens, that's when the lungs really expand. Okay, so eyes gazing, tongue on the roof of the mouth, and we're gonna start with threes. In three, two, one, let's go. Switch the four. Regulate the breath slowly, quietly, swallow, swallow, swallow. Breathe where you can't hear the breath. Breathe where you can't hear the breath at all. Only with the nose, slow down your exhales as much as possible, let that inhale come in naturally. Thank you all for sharing the breath. How are we feeling with that one? Uh, does anybody wanna come on here and uh, share their experience? Uh, someone goes, when weight training should nasal, breath only, um. It depends, I've actually worked with athletes myself, um, one-on-ones, it's, it's very tricky. It really depends on what you're doing, um. Maybe later down the line, I'm not too focused on becoming, coming out with a course like that. I may team up with a, a fitness trainer themselves and uh, do something with that, but that's later down the line if anything. But uh, yeah, if you can, go, go for it, in terms of weight training. Does anybody wanna come on here and uh, share their experience live? I would love that. And, huh, thank you, as a breath worker, I don't nearly join other people guiding, much love. And guys, um, although I am shadow banned by Instagram, they finally allowed me to finally have more people in here, so if more than one people wanna join in, you're more than welcome to hop in here, okay?
Yo, what's up, man?
Hey there, one second, I finally got to do this, I'm going to do this. I manifested this, I don't care if I was shadow banned or not, it's happening. And boom, let's see if we can get this going, let's see. Multiple rooms, let's, let's get this going. It should change any minute now. Oh, there we go, there we go, yeah! Finally!
What's going on, guys?
What's going on?
So um, can uh, one person go one at a time and share their experience? I'll, I'll turn the music down one second.
Anyone who can go first. If you want to.
What's up?
Yeah, Pharaoh, you came on here first, so I'll let you go.
Okay, well, that was my first time doing that kind of breath work, and honestly, like, as a person that's really, like, sensitive to energies and stuff, I really felt that, like, trying it out for the first time, I really felt that, so. Um, it was actually him, he shared, he shared it to me, you're live.
Heard it to him.
Yeah, that's why I'm here, so, like, shout out to him, to Eon.
You already know, man, that was amazing, still, I, my whole body was buzzing, guys. Awesome.
Fire. Hold on, we have one more person wanna hop on in here. Think we can have, ah, I think it only allows four. The Mercy.
Yeah, that was the first time I was doing that breath work.
Yo! Hey! We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna let him finish and then, then you'll go, Mercy.
Alright, no problem.
Yes. I've been practicing, um, well, uh, usually every day I do Qi Gong, and I'm conscious of my breath and whatnot. Going outside to even uh, sun gazing with it. But I've never, um, I just recently started putting my uh, tongue to the roof of my mouth, cuz I know this helps, you know, to keep me more so in a flow state. So combining that, you know, that, those locks, that was powerful.
Yeah, it's a great intro, thank you guys for joining. Mercy, what's, what's going on, brother, how you feeling?
Thanks, um, I'm feeling great, honestly, every time I do your breath work, I feel amazing, um. I try to do your breath work every morning, but um, when it comes to the tongue, the tongue definitely uh, connects that, 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 those energy connections, so. Um, when it came to the breath work for today, the one breath felt amazing, bro. Uh, but, yeah, I'm gonna try to incorporate that one breath more often.
Fire. So did you guys, uh, I don't know if anyone here tasted, cuz uh, tasted their saliva being a little bit different.
A little bit, yeah, I described it really, but it was definitely different.
Fire. Alright, guys, thank you for hopping on here, I'm gonna let some other people pop in, cuz I see the requests down there. Like I said, guys, pop in your requests if you wanna hop on here and uh, join in. So guys, you gotta hit the X button, I don't know if I can, yeah, hit the X button so I can get more people in here. Alright, Adam and Hasham. Ninety-two said I tasted it.
What's going on, man, my phone died right when I joined, and it might die again, but.
All good. How are we feeling with that session?
Great, man, that was, that was actually the first time I've done a, a full session with you on live, and that was crazy, man. Uh, I'll try to keep it short, but I just wanna thank you, man, because ever since I've found you and a few other pages, just, you know, learning how to control my breath and learning, not necessarily everything I was doing wrong, but just how uninformed I was, and just all the things that I've learned from you guys have helped me so much, physically and mentally, so. Just wanted to say thanks, man.
Much love, brother, thank you. Alright, there's one more person, Hashim, or Hasham, hope I'm saying your name right. It should be popping in here any moment now. Uh, is there anything else you wanna share, brother?
Uh, oh, what the, what the guy said about the, the roof on the tongue of your mouth, that's something I just recently incorporated, and it's really, that and the gaze up, I was struggling with so much, but, you know, the more and more that I've incorporated it, it's definitely helped out a lot too, so. It's all love, brother, just wanted to say thanks, thanks for letting me on, and uh, I appreciate you, man.
Yeah, much love, thank you. Then you can hit the X button. Alejandro said, I tasted, it tastes like Alka Seltzer. Yeah, well, um, well, this was a breath work, you, we found that uh, I, we, I did a saliva test my, myself before and after. Um, there's more bicarbonate that you produce, so that for a fact tells you, bicarbonate itself is a carbon product. Uh, that force, that in itself tells you that you're building up more carbon in the body, which is super healing. Uh, Richard, finally. Hasham, I don't, I don't know what's going on, brother, but you should be popping on here, I don't know what's going on, maybe, maybe uh, try to send a request, cuz you can't pop on. Hey, Richard!
Oh, what's up, brother, how are you?
I am electrically well. How are we feeling? Did you catch the whole breathwork session?
No, no, I just jumped on, I actually wanted to uh, to throw in that, well, if I may say something, if you don't mind, I just wanted to ask how you were and say thank you and bless you and send love and peace.
Ah, thank you, thank you, well, definitely, um, hit, I'm gonna save it for replay, I've decided to do that. And um, yeah, definitely try it out yourself, it's, we're literally breathing in the, in the Pi sequence, today's Pi day.
Ah, were you doing three-one-fours or three-six-nines?
No, no, three-one-four.
Very nice.
In, in a different manner, so I don't think, um, it's very different from the, the three-six-nine uh, in, in that regard, so definitely give it a try, I love your feedback, cuz you've been doing some energy work yourself. So I like, I like working, I definitely, I love working with athletes or like, people who already like, into energy work, and they can really, like, really feel the difference.
Absolutely. I wanted to tell you that today's Sunday, and today's the seventh day of the creation cycle, right? So I've been doing the breathwork you showed us uh, at the Flow Studio two weeks ago every single day. Um, you know, and Elijah has taken some things with you from the online courses, and we've upgraded the fire breath to the threes, to the sixes, to the nines. And everything you're saying and teaching is absolutely, it's just magical, you know it's magical, you can feel it, I can feel it, and it is make my whole reality and my whole level of magic and manifestation and health and fitness and my ability to influence other people's vibrations and raise the vibrations of the room that I am in, increased so much that after I gave my dad a session today, and it was, you know, he had never done anything quite that, and then I took him into some yoga and some nutrition and whatnot, but after that, I needed to make myself stop and take a break, and I wanna remind everyone, this is gonna put you in overdrive for your self-development, and we all need to remember, take some time just to chill. And that's it. So I just wanted to send a message of relaxation and peace.
Thank you, brother, thank you.
Thank you always, but if anyone else wants to jump on, I'll let them go, if there's anything you'd like to ask me, I'd be happy to throw in.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let more people hop on here and share their experience.
Awesome, well, thank you for everything.
With that.
I appreciate you and I hope you're having a peaceful, joyful, and a deep Sunday filled with breath and love.
Much love, brother.
I'll check out the thing afterward, thank you very much, I'm very excited for it.
For sure. Hey, uh, Lotus, do you, do you wanna share your experience?
Yeah, hey, I, I don't know. Yeah, man, um, I've been inconsistent with a lot of things, and um, this was a huh, I, I needed this, uh, I need to get back on what I've used to be on, so this was just a reintroduction of what I've been tripping on, I haven't been, oh gosh. Oh, this is just bad.
It's not bad.
I haven't been doing what I'm supposed to be doing, but this is like the re-introduction of everything I gotta, I've gotta do, man, god. So yeah, I'm just thankful I happened to be on IG, I saw you get on, I didn't, I didn't know it was gonna be a session, I'm just like, so thankful. Like, this is really, really ridiculously wonderful, and um, man, uh, I'm gonna be following you a lot more and getting back on my breathing, my meditation, my yoga, my whatever, cuz uh, it's, it's heavy these days, so um, I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm trying to be the, the balloon man, for sure.
Much love to you, Lotus, thank you for hopping on here, and you're, you're welcome anytime to hop on, alright?
Thank you, will do.
Peace.
Alright, peace.
Hey, Devon.
Hey, brother.
Hey, man, just wanna say thank you so much for the session. Um, this was actually my first session I joined and I listened all the way through. Um, and I'm kinda new to breathwork, but what I experienced was just a overwhelming sense of peace. Um, today, today, actually, I was in the hospital, and I saw one of my friend, one of my best friends get the plug pulled. So, you know, it's been heavy, but, you know, it felt like synchronic, it felt like synchronicity when I, when I sat down and I saw you went live, so. You know, part of me said to try this out, and by the end of it, when we got to the uh, regulated breathing, that's when the calmness uh, took over, so. This definitely has put me on the path to like, go deeper into this, cuz I'm kind of already into breathwork, so. Thank you again.
Much love, brother, and be well.
Thank you.
Miguel, where do you go, buddy? Um, I just wanted to also add that uh, when the, when the spirit passes on into another dimension, another body, wherever it goes, into the next, we're still sharing that breath, we're still breathing, our ancestors, we're breathing the same air our ancestors were. So, we're connected in all dimensions of reality i-in that sense. And that, that's a beauty of breath consciousness, just understanding that, not even understanding, just living it, just feeling it, just being it, just embodying it, just witnessing it. It's there to remind us that never ends. Never ends. Uh, does anybody else wanna hop on here or any questions uh, before I go? Today was also heavy energy day, I believe there's a retro, oh, Alejandro. Yeah, it's also uh, daylight savings, so everyone like shifted in terms of time, quote unquote. Hey, Alejandro.
What's up?
Brother, how are you? I'm good, I'm electrically well, electrically balanced.
I'm glad.
Did you get, did you get a chance to, to feel out that breathwork we did?
Yes, yes, I did, I just got back from work and I just jumped on it, um, and you know, as you may know, uh, having a, a, an alkaline diet, it, it just doubles the effects, so I feel, I feel everything, you know, sometimes uh, my ears start ringing, sometimes I feel my feet tingling, um, overall, I feel just, jeez, man, like a load coming off, um. I feel so still, I just feel that stillness, that calmness, um. And I try to integrate that moment into my, my, my everyday life, you know, so. It has helped tremendously to, for stress, and I, I have a go-to now, you know, um. So it has, it has helped my life so much. Um, I even, sometimes when I do it in the summer, and I, in the la-last summer, I would, when I was doing breathwork, I actually got synchronicities, uh, epiphanies, um, just, things just start to click, man. Um, and yeah, I've been in um, and, and, and a lot of the times, you know, especially when you eat clean, um, yeah, I feel like, it's a taste of like Alka Seltzer, it's sort of, yeah, it's so cool. And uh, my grandfather told me, he's like, yeah, that's the taste of your energy, and uh, and I'm like, oh, that's, that's really nice.
If you, if you guys, if you guys really pay attention, if, let's say you're really, really angry, really, there's a different taste in your saliva, cuz that's what's happening, it's shifting the water structure, any water that you create has a, a, a quicker effect, quote unquote, to molecularly change to uh, whatever your resonating of energies, this DNA reading other DNA in terms of what it's putting on in terms of frequency, and that's what you're literally tasting and feeling.
Yeah, yeah, uh, so yeah, man, thank you so much, it helps me so much, and you know, um, I actually integrate this breathwork, sometimes when I have to go do something that I feel nervous about, and oh, man. it's, it's a world of difference, uh, you approach the whole situation differently.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you. Thank you.
But my volume is low, uh-oh. Hope it wasn't low, it wasn't too low. Spivo, I saw you there. Hold on, anybody hit the request, no one else hit the request button? I don't know what happened to Miguel, Miguel was gonna hop on here. Oh, okay, thank you, Mercy. Yeah, I don't know what happened to Miguel, but um, thank you all for sharing the breath. Uh, Richard, thank you. Yeah, thank you all for sharing the breath, if anyone's on Clubhouse, um, you can follow me on Clubhouse. Alchemy Breathwork uh, Clubroom is there. And uh, what Richard was talking about, he was talking about Breath Family, uh, the members group, and uh, there's literally hundreds and hundreds of tutorials in there, but not only that, we do Zoom calls together. And we'll go over questions, we do breath work together as well, we make our own breath music together as a collective with intention, there's a whole beautiful ceremony beforehand and and uh, that's what happens, and then that's available for repla- replay within uh, Breath Family in that regard. Link is in the bio if you guys, if that interests you, or um, if you want a lifetime of it for free, uh, inbox me and I'll tell you how you get that, that's really over, if you purchase anything over the one hour mark, you literally get a lifetime of being part of Breath Family and uh, it's a growing, beautiful community uh, that is, it's really doing wonders for everyone and each other, we're literally feeding off each other's energy in that regard, there's no hierarchy, there's also a WhatsApp group and everyone is just helping each other, like you go in there, it's just pure, pure bliss of just growth, 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 you know, that's what you feel in that community, and I'm so honored to, to just be part of that co-creation. And, and this co-creation right here, so I thank you all for sharing the breath, until next time, peace. Happy Pi Day.